I called the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Oh, gosh. Roll call, no vote. Just roll call. I'm sleepy. Y'all forgive me in advance. Okay, here we go.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Here.
Member Holm.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page. Member Phillips. Madam Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Page?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Phillips?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number five.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
A motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a music school at seventy-four oh one Hazel Avenue.
At this time, the public is invited to the podium to provide any comments that they have regarding the conditional use permit. And those joining us via Zoom, you are invited to provide comment as well. Please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Mayor, there are no hands.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Public hearing to receive input on how the city should allocate sixty-four thousand dollars in community development block grant funds, which will become available after January one, two thousand and twenty-three.
At this time, the public is invited to approach the podium and provide any public comment they wish regarding the community development block grant. And for those joining us on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
I'm in a couple situations with the, um, okay. I'm in under a couple categories, more than being a senior and also being on disability fixed income. So, any kind of grants when it comes to me owning our home would be very appreciated if they designate, like, uh, one of the things in particular right now is the roof, and that's always a major expense. We've already had it replaced once in thirty years we've had the house. And I'd like to see the continuation of that. And if there's any other senior programs that I may not be aware of, I would like to, um, get literature on that to send to our home or I'll pick it up. And I think that's about all I have right now, so.
Thank you, sir. And what's your name?
Richard Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
The other person owns the house also is Kirk Joyce, my husband.
Thank you very much. When you step to the podium, there's the mic. You gotta press the button while you talk, though. Yes.
Okay, um, my name's, uh, Linda Hartman, and I'm next door to Richard Joyce. And, uh, we've both lived there for over twenty years, and I'm elderly and disabled also, and it's getting harder to keep the place up a little bit, you know? I'd like to get maybe the black, the driveway blacked out and some, uh, landscaping maybe. Everything's in pretty good shape, uh, but, uh, you know, if it, uh, uh, we're aware of some, if you have any other like Richard was saying, thanks for all the little disabled people, grants available to help with our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are no hands, don't say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reese. Any additional comment? Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
It's a public forum.
At this time, we are opening the floor to public comment, so if anyone would like to approach the podium and provide public comment on city business, they are welcome to do so at this time. The same invitation is provided to those joining us via Zoom. All right, thank you. Don't get fun. Hello?
I heard that you're, um, considering redoing the Airbnb. And we had some concerns about that because of the, not only what went on downtown where at Airbnb there were shootings and everything. We had, um, I think I, I sent all the, um, council people a little letter. Sarah, uh, was the one that answered us. But we were concerned because that was just terrible when there was people that all they had was parties. They weren't, you know, if it was an Airbnb for a short time, they wouldn't have any stake in Maplewood, and I just don't think that's a good thing. I think there has to be some restrictions where the neighbors aren't bothered, uh, traffic isn't, uh, a problem because the people would park in our parking lot, I mean, in our driveway. We couldn't get out. We'd have to go across our lawn, couldn't get down our street, and it, it just wasn't safe. And so I just want them to think about if they are going to redo them, to think about safety and stuff like that.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Announcement.
Any announcements from council? Uh, just briefly, uh, members of the city council will be at the, um, upcoming summer concert on August twenty-fourth at, uh, Ryan Hummer. So, uh, please come by and say hi, um, pending any rain and that sort of thing.
There. Don't we also have a movie night at the pool this week?
Yes, why don't you tell us about it?
Uh, we are having a movie night, um, gonna look it up real quick, but I know it's Thursday, is it?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
The movie is in Canto.
At eight o'clock. We would love for you to go online. You could go online to City of Maplewood. Um, I think we're having a, what's the name of the movie?
In Canto.
In Canto. I like that movie. And so we're asking all our city's, uh, members and all our families and neighbors to come out and enjoy a nice movie by the pool, and some of the pool will be open. That's also read, too. So I just wanna make sure we get that, so thank y'all.
Good job, good job. This Saturday. Thank you. Any additional announcement? Madam Clerk, item number ten, please.
Approval of the July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eleven, please.
Parks and Recreation Commission report.
All right, Ms. Shankleberg, welcome. Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Hi there.
I'm gonna share my screen here so everybody can see the presentation. Oh, I think I need permissions to share it. Or do you? You tell me what you would like me to do, Mr. Reese, if you want me to share or just speak along.
You want me to, uh, share my screen? Does that work, okay?
That works. Perfect. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate being able to join virtually. We've got a COVID case in the house, so I just thought I have an abundance of caution. Um, I would join remotely and, um, not potentially get the entire council and all of our visitors sick today. So, um, my name is Laney Shankleberg. I'm the Chair of the Maplewood Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'm excited to join you today to give you an update on what we've been working on. Um, if you scroll down just a little bit, you can see the, um, Park and Recreation Commission members. Um, there's myself. Um, our Vice Chair is Julie Francois. Our Secretary is Beth Newman. Um, we have Megan Doherty, uh, Becky Flynn, Sarah Walker, and, uh, Johnny Lewis, Christian Nagel, and Keenan Ender. Um, I also do want to thank Bob Harsh for his service. He, uh, recently retired from the Parks and Recreation Commission after, I believe, twenty-seven years. Um, on the next slide around Parks and Recreation Commission responsibilities, um, mostly put this in for reference just for everybody to refresh on what the Parks and Recreation Commission does. Um, we help understand, um, how to devise and advise on maintaining our park system, designation of lands, um, any new land acquisitions, um, how those parks are managed, um, how they're improved, um, as well as uh, ordinance regulations, and then, um, advisement on the, uh, the design of different parks. Uh, so on to updates. Um, if you go down to the next slide around their system-wide equity-based master plan, um, this is our big project. Um, the city council approved, uh, funding for us to devise a system-wide equity-based master plan for our park system. Um, what that does is there is a framework that are, that is detailed out by, um, at the national level for, um, the National Association of Parks and Recreation, uh, that lays out a framework that details how we can help to understand the history and current barriers to park access, um, and ensure that we have a vision that helps remove any inequities and ensures that our parks and open spaces are providing the most benefits um, to our community members and to our visitors. Um, what the deliverable looks like is, um, there's a comprehensive document and a plan in place that includes, um, uh, an action plan for every park, um, recommendations on if we should change the, the system that we currently have in place. Um, we are taking a look at, uh, equity across, um, multiple different lenses. So we're taking a look at, are we equitable and inclusive, um, amongst, for any visitor of any visit, of any, um, abilities seen or unseen? Are we physically accessible? Um, do enough people have access to walk to a park or a short drive to a park? Um, are we, uh, do we have a sustainable system? Are we, um, promoting economic development? Uh, we talked a lot about this when we were selecting a firm to help us with this plan. Um, and we identified the value themes that we wanted to uphold as the Park and Recreation Commission. Um, so those are here. You'll see accessibility and connectivity. Those are really important. Um, if people can't get to our parks, they can't use them. Um, inclusivity and belonging. I, I think belonging is extremely important. We can, we know we are a diverse community. We strive to be inclusive. But are we truly providing a space of belonging for all who are going to come to our parks? Um, sustainability is extremely important, and, um, we try to look for opportunities to work with the Sustainability Commission, um, in that regard. Uh, positive economic impact, healthy living, conservation, and then, of course, safety. Um, so let's get into the meat of it. Um, how are we gonna go about doing this? We've partnered with SWT Design to develop a master plan. Um, they are a local firm just over in Webster Groves. The city has worked with them before. We evaluated a couple of different firms and decided that SWT was the best choice to help us, um, realize our vision. Uh, we have completed Phase One, and that is a park and facility inventory and assessment. Um, SWT came out and went with the city, took a look at every single one of our parks, um, and then, uh, helped us understand via an inventory all of the, um, opportunities and all of the aspects of our parks that we need to consider. Um, there was some heat mapping done around accessibility, um, really cool study. So next up is, um, the Community Needs Assessment. Um, and so in Phase Two, I'm sorry, could you go right back up? Okay, thanks. Um, so, uh, for the Community Needs Assessment, we'll be, um, taking a look at our demographic and market profile. Um, that we'll be executing, and we, that's really SWT, under a steering committee and the city's advisement, will be executing community needs surveys, um, we'll be holding steering meetings, and there'll be proactive community engagement at the end of that. Then we'll get the Community Needs and Engagement Summary Report. Phase Three, I think I have a copy paste error. That's not the Community Needs Assessment. That's the resulting master plan. Um, but that's where we get the final master plan that will help us understand what the recommendations are for all of our parks for the entire system, and then, um, the how. So what would be the, the funding strategies and the implementation strategies, and how would this, um, be sustained long-term? Um, you can see an example on the next slide under the Park and Facility Inventory and Assessment. This might be a little bit tricky to see, um, but it'll give you kind of a sense of some of the deliverables we've seen so far. So we have a full park system overview. Um, we are assessing eleven different spaces in this, which is quite a lot given the, um, the size of our community. Uh, and then, uh, so we have a comprehensive overview, and then we also are looking at constraints, concerns, and opportunities for every single park and space that is under our purview. Um, the one I have in here actually will be expanded very soon as the steering committee just met with SWT. And, um, we talked, um, even further about different opportunities and, um, community feedback that we've heard about different parks. Um, next up are milestones and next steps. Um, so this is just kind of a copy of the project plan that we're following right now. Um, again, Phase One has been, uh, completed. We're now in Phase Two. Um, some of the fun things that are gonna happen in Phase Two are engagement with the community, and there are a variety of different tactics that SWT is going to take and, um, partner with the city on, um, in order to make sure that we are getting, um, as much, uh, community feedback as possible. Um, we have talked about different strategies to specifically target underserved voices within our community, where SWT can do custom mailers to particular areas or can make sure that they are going to particular events where they'll be more likely to hear voices that have not been as represented historically. Um, we've talked about partnering with the school district to make sure that we are surveying, uh, families and youth within, uh, our school system. Um, there will also be the ability for people to proactively go out and submit the survey, but then they'll, SWT will also be at different community events to intercept people where they are and solicit their feedback. Um, as we continue along that, then we'll be able to have a really robust, um, bank of different, uh, thoughts in order to help craft the recommendations going forward. So, moving on, I'm excited to share, uh, Central Park upgrades that we're looking at. Um, we are also partnered with SWT to, um, to redesign Central Park. Um, if you can scroll down just a little bit to the next, oh, there we go. Um, we are, the city is preparing to submit an application to the Municipal Park Grant Commission of St. Louis County, um, for a refresh of Central Park. Um, Tiffany Hyde is managing all of that and is doing a fantastic job. Um, we, um, this is the second version of the design that we are looking at, and I think this is the one that is probably going to end up in the grant application. Um, community members joined the Parks Board during, um, the meeting in, Parks Board meeting in July to provide feedback on the design. You will, um, and this design does reflect their feedback around that park. Um, Central Park was chosen because, um, there, uh, basically the entire park has end-of-life equipment, um, and it is going to be a, a good space for kind of the budget that we will likely go for in the grant. Um, so excited to move this along and hopefully get the, the funding approved. Some examples of some of the equipment they'll go in are gonna be more exclusive, uh, more inclusive, and you'll see that on the next slide here. Um, we are encouraged, SWT, to look at different spaces that can be inclusive of, um, anyone who may visit, particularly children who may have seen or unseen varying abilities, um, and then making sure that any equipment that we install is as inclusive as possible and serves a wide age range of children. Down on, uh, the next couple of slides, just a few additional updates. Um, the splash pad is up and running, so I know that's been a popular addition to the, um, Aquatic Center. Um, planning is underway for a park passport, and so this is something I think is going to be a lot of fun. Councilmember Schmidt, um, had recommended it prior to, um, her retiring from the council, and we have taken that, and Tiffany is also, um, working on that project. Um, the end, something particularly exciting, uh, Deer Creek, uh, Park Rocket Ship Park was featured in St. Louis Magazine for one of the best parks for kids in St. Louis. All right, I just spent a whole lot of time talking. Um, who has questions?
Ms. Shankleberg, thank you so much for the report. Thank you for the work that, uh, your board is doing. It's phenomenal work. I really appreciate how you all are trying to not work in a silo and work in partnership with other boards and commissions that the city has, especially with the Sustainable Sustainability Commission, so thank you so much for that. Um, everything sounds amazing, and my own question is, I understand that there's been some planning and discussing on a balloon glow. Um, could you give us any information about that? I know that it's in the planning stages or maybe even the brainstorming stages, but if you could give us some information about that, I'd be grateful.
Absolutely. So, um, one of our, um, commission members, Sarah Walker, is very well-connected to the hot air ballooning community within St. Louis, which is exciting, and has offered to, um, leverage that relationship and her contacts to see if a balloon glow is something that our community may want to host. We were looking at, um, Deer Creek Park. We have met with Mr. Reese and, um, about that and the, the potential of doing it. Um, I believe this year was, um, probably not going to be in the cards, but that next year is, um, could be a possibility, and we're, we're gonna continue those conversations. Um, it would be a glow, so the, um, balloons would remain on the ground, so not a race. So it's a little bit less logistically complicated than, um, you know, the, the Great Forest Park balloon race would be. Um, but, uh, everyone loves hot air balloons, so we thought that could be a fun, new attraction to kind of add to our community event schedule.
Thank you. And then my last request is, before Mr. Harsh, uh, retired from the Park Board, you had made a request for me. He is with us in the, in the council, uh, chambers. Would you just let him know what that request was for me?
Oh, I am so glad, Bob, that you are there. Um, I, I had made a request that we could make a proclamation. We could recognize Bob Harsh for his many years of service, um, to the community and to the Parks Board.
And so I have that proclamation, and I will be sure to get it to you this evening, Mr. Harsh. Thank you for all of the time that you have given to the city of Maplewood, serving on the Park Board. It's greatly appreciated. Those are all my questions. Do any council members have any questions from Ms. Shankleberg? All right. Thank you again for joining us. Thank you for the work that you all are doing. It's phenomenal. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate the council's support. This master plan would not be possible without it, so appreciate the partnership.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Mary Killian to the Designing Board and Historic Preservation Commission and establishing her term of office as expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Yes.
Councilmember Holm.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-nine is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase two police vehicles from Joe Mottens Ford Lincoln, Inc. by means of the statewide contract through the state of Missouri, Division of Purchasing and Materials Management Cooperative Performance Services in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Yes.
Councilmember Holm.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty is approved.
I would like to make a comment on this.
Yes.
So, um, we had bud- budgeted to purchase three vehicles this year. However, with the increase in prices, we're only gonna purchase two. Um, at this time next year, we will likely go back, go back to purchasing three and, uh, budget accordingly. That's our standard. We usually budget for three, but we only get two this year because prices, hey, so I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
A resolution of the City of the City Council, the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase the heavy-duty, one-and-a-half-ton, twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Silverado heavy-duty truck for eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holm.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-one is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to purchase a twenty-twenty-two John Deere Mini excavator for sixty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkham.
Yes.
Councilmember Holm.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to submit the twenty-twenty-three community development block grant application to the St. Louis County Office of Community Development.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I just, um, I was wondering if, uh, Michael, you could just lay out for the folks in the audience, uh, how these ones will be dispersed since we had a couple speakers.
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Anthony Traxler to do that for us, since he has a lot of experience with this. One, one thing I would like to know just for everyone, before Anthony begins, um, just, uh, for purposes of, um, outreach, uh, notices were posted on July fifteenth at the Aquatic Center, the Yellow Bus Loop, Citizens Park, the Library, Ryan Hummer Park, Deer Creek Park, Sutton Loop Park, Kellon Park, and City Hall, and we also posted the hearing notice for our Facebook page on July twenty-second and a, um, reminder on August fourth. Anthony?
Anthony, would you forgive me? I'm sorry, Mr. Traxler, would you please come to the podium and use the mic? Thank you so much.
Recommended dispersment would be
Recommended dispersment would be fifty-four thousand for the home improvement program, which is what I believe. The couple here that had previously spoken had used that in the past. They mentioned senior citizens basically based on its income eligible. And then this, the additional ten thousand dollars would be for the subsistence payments, which would be going to heat up St. Louis for utility, utility payments. Ten thousand is the max allowed for that, so we have to break it up between the two, so that's what we're recommending.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the ten thousand that go to heat up St. Louis, that's what we are actually currently doing right now. Is that correct? The ten thousand we talked about earlier?
That's correct. Last year, we tried to do rental assistance. We, we didn't get as many, we didn't get any bites on that because it has to be administered through the county, and they were trying to find a third party seller to heat up St. Louis to, to allocate those funds. There was also a lot of other programs, federal programs around and through the, through St. Louis County. People were getting rental assistance in that way. And so we're basically taking that money back and gonna reinvest that back into the utility assistance program because we spend that ten thousand dollars down annually easily.
Thank you. Any further discussion? That's right, yeah. You know, I'm sorry, Mr. Traxler, I know you just sat down. Would you go ahead and, and like fully answer that question for, for everyone?
And your question, ma'am, was, can you get utility assistance as well? Is that what it was? It is, and we have money allocated in our current fiscal year from the prior block grant application for that. So when I talk to you tomorrow about the home improvement, I can put you in the same, it'd be the same individual I'm gonna put you in contact with.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Traxler. Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-three is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to submit the application and sign all documents necessary for a grant from the Municipal Park Grant Commission of St. Louis County for improvements to Central Park.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-four is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid of Stat, Inc. Tuck Pointing and Waterproofing to Tuck Point to Maplewood Public Library Building.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Go ahead. Yeah, you're fine.
So we've had a couple items of legislation on this over the course of twenty twenty-two, and this is again part of fulfilling our commitment. We came to an agreement with the library and Ashley Bryant, the director of the library in December of twenty twenty-one. I made this a high priority when I came on board a year ago, the partner with the library and fixing the library, and I'm proud to say that we fulfilled our commitment. With this investment here, it will be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're investing. The roof was done a couple of months ago, and I'm very, very proud to say this will be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars once we make this investment. So I just wanted to point that out, and thank you for your support on this.
Thank you.
And the roof isn't leaking, right?
Any additional discussion? Hearing then, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-five is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
Bill sixty-one ninety-six and ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, article four, offenses against persons of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances by amending chapter thirty-four offenses, article six, offenses against public peace, section thirty-four dash one forty-one, hate offenses.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, please provide the second reading.
Bill sixty-one ninety-six and ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, article four, offenses against persons of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances by amending chapter thirty-four offenses, article six, offenses against public peace, section thirty-four dash one forty-one, hate offenses.
That was the second reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty.
Bill sixty-one ninety-seven and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the budget for the City of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one ninety-seven and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the budget for the City of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, I, obviously, this is a great idea. Going forward, I would imagine that we're probably gonna need to use that more and more just due to the historic rains and flooding that are probably occur over the next to fix the climate, so it's a good idea.
Until we fix the climate, that part. Yeah, thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
Bill sixty-one ninety-eight and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty, traffic and motor vehicles, section fifty dash two forty-three, other prohibitions on parking by amending Bartold Avenue, twenty-nine hundred block, west side of street.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-one ninety-eight and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Code of Ordinances, Chapter fifty, traffic and motor vehicles, section fifty dash two forty-three, other prohibitions on parking by amending Bartold Avenue, twenty-nine hundred block, west side of street.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-two.
Bill sixty-one ninety-nine and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Maplewood for project number STP dash nine nine zero one six six seven, TIP number seven one nine one dash twenty-three Greenwood Boulevard.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Second reading, please, Madam Clerk.
And Bill sixty-one ninety-nine and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Maplewood for project number STP dash nine nine zero one six six seven, TIP number seven one nine one dash twenty-three Greenwood Boulevard.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, how you doing?
Okay.
Okay. Item number twenty-three.
Bill sixty-two hundred and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to allow a music school at twenty-seven forty-three Sutton Boulevard and seventy-four oh one Hazel Avenue.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two hundred and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to allow a music school at twenty-seven forty-three Sutton Boulevard and seventy-four oh one Hazel Avenue.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-four.
Bill sixty-two oh one and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Brian Hobbs of Chateau Maplewood Wine Bar and Shop to operate a restaurant facility, wine bar with retail shop at seventy-three twenty-six Manchester Road and seventy-three twenty-six B Manchester Road.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the old location where the bakery used to be in Manchester?
What was it? Sweet, Sweet Tooth?
Yeah, Sweet Tooth.
I believe so.
And so the guy that's next to us now wants to get that spot to stand out?
Yes. Any additional discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading.
Bill sixty-two oh one and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Brian Hobbs of Chateau Maplewood Wine Bar and Shop to operate a restaurant facility, wine bar with retail shop at seventy-three twenty-six Manchester Road and seventy-three twenty-six B Manchester Road.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-five.
Bill sixty-one ninety-four and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance fifty-five seventy-three as amended the Maplewood Code of Ordinances by amending section fifty dash two forty-three, other prohibitions on parking by adding Lyle Avenue, twenty-six hundred block, resident only parking, west side of street, beginning one hundred twenty-two feet north at the Manchester Road intersection and ending one hundred forty-two feet north at the Manchester Road intersection.
That is the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Ordinance number five nine eight nine is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-six.
Bill sixty-one ninety-five and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, to re-adopt and to establish and make public a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests of certain municipal officials.
Thank you. That was the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the bill. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Councilmember Faulkingham.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Ordinance number five nine nine zero is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
Old Business Ordinance Review Committee.
Are there any reports? The chapter thirty-four offenses ordinance review committee is meeting virtually this Saturday at nine AM. The meeting information will be on the city website, and if you're interested in joining, we're more than welcome.
I want to as well, the zoning ordinance review committee met yesterday. Obviously, to review results of changes to the ADU ordinances proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission members. The next steps are as follows. Councilmember Phillips will attend the next plan and zoning meeting, the Human Services Commission meeting, and potentially the Sustainability Commission meeting in September. The next zoning ordinance review committing, committee meeting is Monday, August twelfth at six PM via Zoom. And the City Council Work Session Regarding ADU Changes was postponed until Tuesday, September thirteenth. That update is from Sandy, as I was unable to attend the meeting.
Thank you. Any additional reports? All right. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-eight.
Council communication.
I just want to acknowledge the city, city fire department and police department. Well, one, for the last two weeks, we have been struggling with the flood, and I was out on the first day early in the morning, and our city, police, and fire department was out there rescuing, working hard, pouring down rain and everything. So I want to really acknowledge them because they was out there timeless and working very hard. It's not just a job, but the passion that I saw that morning, I appreciate it. Also want to make a knowledge just for our resident in the city of Maplewood, because I have been getting a lot of phone calls just to ask to be a little patient. We know the grass is growing high, we know trash is by the side of the road and everything. People are doing cleaning up and getting things out there, and we are just trying to make sure that we are working with each individual that was affected by the flood to help them, you know, get their life story back over or get their house back together. I know that St. Louis Food Bank will be in the area this weekend passing out cleaning supplies. And so I want to make sure that our city know that too, but just be patient with your neighbors if they have extra trash and everything, because we saw that the, I think, Republican was coming down on how much boat they picking up, but people are still trying to clean out basements and stuff. But just thank you to the city, fire department, and police for all the work, even with the rescue with Deer Creek. So I thank everyone of y'all.
Any additional council communication? Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-nine.
Mayor's report.
Thank you. I just want to echo what my colleague, council member Jones, just stated. Thank y'all. I know that you all do this, and you just think this is our job, but I, the way that you work for and with our community, we don't see it as that. We see it as you really do care, and we appreciate you. And I know the stories that, that I've heard and the things I've seen, the pictures I've seen, you all are jumping into water with just ropes to get people out of vehicles, and you're standing in what appears to be lakes of water to help people. Words cannot express the gratefulness that, that I have for you all and that our community has for you all, so thank you very much. And Michael, thank you too, because And Michael, thank you too, um, because at, at the end of the day, you are the leader for, um, our city administration and I just appreciate how you all are working together to make sure that our residents and our communities, community members and visitors are safe during this horrible current issues that we're dealing with. So thank you all. Um, excuse me. I just want to, uh, spotlight the Sustainability Commission. I met with the Chair, Stefan Denson, and he let me know that the, the Sustainability Commission is creating a, a sustainability cons- contortion consortium. Thank you, consortium. And they're creating this with the city of Clayton, Richmond Heights, Webster Groves, and St. Louis County. Uh, they would have included the city of St. Louis, however, that position, their, their sustainability position is currently vacant. But once that's filled, then they're going to invite, uh, the Sustainability Director for the city into this group as well. So, uh, our Sustainability Commission is really making an impact, uh, not only in Maplewood, but in the region. Uh, we lead in just the sustainability options and solutions because of this commission. So just wanted to spotlight the work that they're doing. Um, uh, Chair Denson also let me know that they are currently working on a sustainability plan. Uh, so it's similar to what the Parks Board is doing. And I'm excited to, uh, see that come to fruition and what they're going to work on. And, and it's actually a bit similar in that, uh, Chair Denson made sure to let me know that he wants to have community input as well. And so they're not going to work in asylum. They're going to work, um, with, within our community. And also he sent out a proposal to the other commissions and boards to let them know like, hey, we're doing this and we'd like to work in partnership. So I'm just very excited about that work. Uh, let's see. I wanted to also let community members know in just a moment that people with flood damage can apply for FEMA help. Renters and homeowners in St. Louis County, as well as the city of St. Louis and St. Charles County, who were affected by the flash flooding on July twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth may apply for FEMA disaster assistance. You can apply online at disasterassistance.gov or by calling a one-eight-hundred, uh, number or by using the FEMA mobile app. And so I know Mr. Reese will have all of this information and I'm sure that he will be sure this is provided to our community via our social media outlets and our website. But just to let everyone know that FEMA is now accepting applications for assistance if you suffered from the flood July twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth. All right. And then, uh, finally, I attended the, um, a summer meeting. Our city is a member of the Mayor's Innovation Project. And so I attended the summer meeting that was in Tacoma, Washington. And I will let you all know, I became a member of Mayor's for Guaranteed Income. Uh, also, I gave a presentation on our, on the council's creation of the Human Services Commission, as well as the resolution that we passed announcing the United States Court Supreme, uh, the United States Supreme Court's overturning of Roe v. Wade. And since Councilmember Fockingham is here, I can say it directly to him and to you all. Thank you for coming to me and telling me that you wanted a resolution that denounced what the US Supreme Court, uh, did and now so that what our government, um, our government, our governor, um, did by the triggering, uh, effect of overturning of Roe. Um, I, again, just sincerely appreciate you. With, uh, Councilmember Fockingham just said, you know, I, I have daughters. And I was like, I'm glad you do. Thank you. I'm glad you do. So, um, I just appreciate you, um, letting me know that we needed to stand on that. And I want to let you all know that after I gave that presentation to the other mayors, we received, um, uh, I couldn't even finish the presentation and we started to receive like innovation. So we're doing good work here, y'all. And finally, I just wanted to let everyone know. So being, uh, in the Pacific Northwest, each time that they have a meeting, they do a land acknowledgement for the indigenous people of, of that area. And because we already, um, have created a resolution that states we celebrate Indigenous People Day in October, I'm just going to go forward, making sure that I provide a land acknowledgement at each meeting. So that's just a heads up. When that starts to happen, you all know why I'm doing it. All right, that is, that concludes my report. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirty.
City Attorney's Report.
Hi, I didn't get to say hi to you. Hello. All right, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-one.
City Manager's Report.
Okay, good evening. I have a rather lengthy report, but, um, I'll try to get through it here. Um, since I'm kind of doing the announcements, uh, Councilmember Phillips usually does those, I'm going to do some of those this evening. So Restaurant Week goes through August fourteenth. For a list of participating restaurants, visit cityofmaplewood.com/fun. Uh, Councilmember Jones already touched on it, this reinforcing, uh, city Maplewood, the professional firefighters Maplewood are hosting a free movie night uh, this Saturday, eight PM. Uh, Schlafly Bottle Works is hosting the Shakespeare Festival's production of A Midsummer Night's Dream on Tuesday, August sixteenth at six-thirty PM. This is a free event. Schlafly Bottle Works and the Riverfront Times are partnering to present Pig and Whiskey, a free all-ages food and music festival, August nineteenth through the twenty-first. That's a Friday through Sunday, August nineteenth through twenty-first. Uh, next item, Maplewood Citizens Academy. We have ten people signed up as of today and are still taking applications. Our first class will be on Monday, October third. Um, they run on Mondays. Everyone who replies will get notified via email of the first class details, the time, the location and the topic. We are very excited to bring back the Maplewood Citizens Academy.
Can you include us on those emails?
Uh, yes.
Do I have to pick this?
Okay, next item. Uh, the August Maple Leaf. As we, uh, established, this is a priority in our budget process. The Maple Leaf, the full edition will go out twice, but we're going to do, uh, uh, a limited edition, uh, an additional twice, uh, two, two times a year. So the Maple Leaf Summer Update will, will hit mailboxes the third week of August. Uh, as a reminder, the full Maple Leaf is published in May and November. New this year, we have added a one-page summer update in August and a winter, winter update in February. So look for that in the coming weeks. Uh, the American Red Cross Blood Drive. Friday, September ninth from twelve PM, twelve noon to five PM in the fire department training room. In remembrance of nine-eleven first responders. A flyer will be ready in the coming days, which will get circulated in our community. Okay, uh, we did this last year, Friday, September ninth from twelve noon to five PM. American Red Cross Blood Drive. Uh, next item, Traffic Calming Project Update. We have received the results of the traffic study survey. The results will be posted on the website and shared on social media this Thursday. The project ultimately will produce traffic calming recommend- recommendations in our community later this year. And in the coming months, I have more to share on this with the city council. Uh, next item, Black Business Month, Month Promotion and Recognition. So seven business owners signed up to be part of the Black Business Month Promotion. They are Sherrill's Herbs, Epitome Auto Spa, Hair and Beauty Restored by Asylum, J.C. Beauty, St. Louis Boxing Club, Spa Cusettics, Will Shire, State Farm Agent. Uh, promotions include a new website page, a series of social media posts and digital ads with St. Louis American and the St. Louis Post Dispatch. And, um, oh, so that's the update on Black Business Month Promotion and Recognition.
That's awesome.
Okay. Uh, the next item is we receive an award. Uh, the Leading the Way Award from ETC. We're a national top performer. So ETC was the organization that did our survey, if you recall, our community survey, our resident and business survey. This is the, the award. This thing is very heavy.
Wait, keep it up, keep it up.
Okay, keep it up.
Okay.
All right. So this is the Leading the Way Award. And this is only given to the top ten percent of all local governments in the United States for the overall quality and value of services provided to residents. We, we received this award based on the satisfaction with the overall quality of services, satisfaction with customer service provided by employees and satisfaction with the value residents think they receive for local taxes and fees. So pretty cool. So congratulations. I have two more items. Okay. I also want to thank our city of Maplewood Emergency Responders and frontline employees. In the past two weeks, we've had three flash flooding incidents, a major apartment fire and a car found in Deer Creek. Our police officers and firefighters have put their lives on the line in responding to these incidents and literally saved several lives by performing water rescues and assisting motorists and homeowners get to safety. That's on top of all the day-to-day calls that they have to respond to. So that's been amazing. I also want to acknowledge our public work staff. Who put in extra hours cleaning up after the flooding and to see it flood again and again. They, the public work staff also helped block roads, provide traffic control, and they even performed a water rescue. Our city employees are very special indeed, and it reaffirms the importance of why we spend money on training in our annual budget. It also reaffirms the significance of applying for grants. The fire department applied for personal flotation devices in twenty-twenty-one and received the equipment in early twenty-twenty-two. The fire department has seven swift water techs that use these flotation devices during their water rescues. The last item I have is today marks my one-year anniversary. Today, exactly, August the ninth. That's why I brought you treats.
Thank you.
I have some scripted comments. I'll be brief. It's been a super year for me and I hope for you. It's been a year of getting to know the city of Maplewood, city employees, residents, business owners and workers, parks, parks and the vibe of the city. I have been welcomed with open arms and I'm just as excited today as I was last August. And I am just as optimistic about the future of Maplewood as when I started and eager to get to work on how we can take a wonderful city to the next level where everyone can share its, its success. Thank you, mayor and council members for hiring me and challenging me and for your vision for the city of Maplewood. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Aw. Thank you, Mr. Reese. We're very happy you chose us to. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-two.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to provide any comment they have that pertains to city business. Uh, for those in the chamber, please step to the podium. And for those on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand.
Let's see, we do have some hands. And I am going to allow Mr. Kriya here to talk first. And we have another hand as well. Mr. Kriya?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Listen, yeah.
Yeah, it's really, really, uh, pretty quick and pretty short. So I just want to say thank you, uh, Mr. Reese for your contributions, your time, your effort. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good. And, uh, we'll now allow Ms. Sudarala. Welcome.
Thank you and happy one-year anniversary.
Thank you.
And I thank the mayor and the city council for a very effective meeting. Much appreciated. And thank you, Mr. Reese, for explaining some of the things that the fire department applied for a grant for because that was part of my question was in light of the recent flooding, um, have we done a equipment needs assessment to make sure our fire department and police department have the equipment to make them safe and our residents of Maplewood if, God forbid, we have another event like we have in the last two weeks?
Well, we definitely have. That's one of the reasons why we're getting this boat. Uh, because we can no longer rely on the city of Brentwood uh, for a boat. Um, uh, we used to think that we could, but with the, uh, rain events that we're now getting and the flood, the flash flooding that we're now getting, we can no longer rely on the city of Brentwood or others in the region. So that's why we're purchasing a boat so that now we can take control of our destiny.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any additional hands, Mr. Reese?
They're right out there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reese, is there, excuse me, Madam, no, forgive me. Mr. Reese, is there any need to go into closed session?
No.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adj-